All right, we'll call the February 24th meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission to order. Roll call.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Here. Okay, so we received the agenda from staff in your packet and is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I would make a motion that we approve the agenda with the removal of item number six, the election of officers, until there's more members of the commission present, and also the removal of the December 16th, 2019 minutes, since there isn't a quorum of the members present.
Okay, that sounds good. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Everybody's in favor. Okay, great. Okay, Paul, you ready for the next thing?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a continuation. Oh, I'm sorry, skipped right through that after all that. Okay, is there a motion? We took off the December 16 minutes because we don't have the right people here. So, we do have January 27th, 2020 minutes. Those were in our packets and we had a chance to take a look at them. If anybody has a comment or correction on those, would somebody like to make a motion to approve it then? Motion?
I will second those.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Henson, second by Ms. McBride.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes, yes or no? Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And so now we're on item three. I jumped ahead on that. Last month, we started a discussion on some text amendments that were brought forward by staff. And after discussing those, we decided to table a couple of those items, three of them, to get more information. And Paul, I'll go ahead and turn that over to you to tell us what you changed on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in your packet, we did not provide a revised staff report. However, we did provide a revised exhibit. And so for exhibit A and exhibit B, the zoning commission did not have concerns with those. But starting with exhibit C, exhibit C is pertaining to... Exhibit C was pertaining to short-term rentals. And the changes from the last meeting are noted in blue text. The red text was from the previous meeting. One of the items that the zoning commission, there were a couple of items. One was compensation. In our definition, we had a short-term rental definition. And the question was compensation, if the guest compensates the owner, the lessee of the unit, or was there another option for compensation when staying at a short-term rental? So, we added a hosting platform to help cover that, hopefully that would address your concerns. So, that was added to the definition. We also, just for your, we noticed or realized in the exhibit before, the items on this are the conditions that are in our conditional use criteria, and these are already existing conditions. And these were the conditions that were identified. So, one of the questions too was if there were repeated violations or repeated complaints on a short-term rental, how, if that could be enforced, or how that would be enforced. So, one option would be by just enforcing a zoning complaint, like we normally do through Hamilton County Courts. There's also an option with a conditional use to bring that conditional use back before the Board of Zoning Appeals. That would be the board that would approve this. And if there are continued violations, to revoke that conditional use. So, that's already an option in the zoning resolution for conditional uses. So, those would be the two opportunities to enforce if we receive completed or repeated complaints. Those are the two items of that for short-term rentals. Did you have any questions on those two items?
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yes, please go ahead.
I did, excuse me, have one question on the short-term rental where we talked about primary portion thereof for a period of less than 30 nights. So, is that 30 consecutive nights? Is that 30 nights out of 365 days?
We were 30 consecutive nights.
Okay, so I think we might want to add that.
Okay.
Those are the only questions I have on it.
Any other questions for staff on that change? Okay, you want to go ahead, Paul?
Okay. So, the next exhibit is pertaining to plan unit development. Two changes were proposed. One was for the definition of determining density. So, the one item that was removed from last month was, is struck through on the... I can show you. So, it struck through on the slide there, developable. So, the definition for determining density is computed by using the land of the entire proposed development by multiplying the maximum permitted density units per acre by the total acreage of the PUD property, excluding land within public or private right of way and land subject to public or nonprofit easement or similar development restrictions. So, that was just to declare how density is calculated for PUD. And then the other item was a general standard for review. This is an additional standard that's not currently in our zoning resolution. And this is pertaining to steep slopes or other natural features on the property. And then it was suggested that we add the language including but not limited to in that general standard.
Any questions for staff on those changes?
In the best determination, are we making it clear that we are still including non-enough lands, naturally non-enough ponds, et cetera?
I feel like it's, yes, it's the entire property, except if there were like a conservation easement on the one PUD that we heard earlier, or last year in 2019. So, yes, if it is a floodplain area, or if it is a lake on the property, that would still be used as part of the density calculation. Now, on the flip side of that, we did add item number 15 to take that into consideration, to make sure that those areas are being protected with the PUD. So, we didn't want to discourage the use of the PUD tool, because we think it's still a valuable tool. But on the other side, it needs to be used responsibly.
I wonder maybe in the definition, it makes sense to not necessarily add a citation or a reference to 15 and sort of put it to it, but like just call it out. Certainly it's not, I'm not sure that that's actually necessary since the importance is very big, but just don't want to get, want it to get lost.
Uh huh.
If they're looking at just the definition. I would not.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions on that one? No?
Okay, and so the final exhibit E is pertaining to murals. So, the intent of adding a definition of murals was to allow for murals in the township that are not, separate them from our sign regulations. So, it's to allow murals as long as they are not a commercial sign. So, murals would be exempt from all signage regulations. They would not be computed as your wall signage calculations. So, we tried to, there was some confusion at the last month. And we tried to just simplify the definition of a mural. But since it did reference non-commercial sign, we felt that that definition was still necessary to include the definition of a non-commercial sign. So, we really omitted most of the definition of the mural, but we tried to keep it very specific that it's, as long as it's considered non-commercial sign, then it would be allowed anywhere and it wouldn't be subject to our regulations for signage.
Okay, so we can see the strikeouts and stuff that Paul was talking about. Does anybody have any questions for staff on that one, that change, meet your concerns?
Yeah, look, just, I like the more concise language of it, but the second sentence says that the mural contains a non-commercial sign. It is very exempt. To me, if I were a pesky kind of guy, I would give a non-commercial, omit my commercial sign and say that it's exempt because of the question of it's non-commercial. Does that seem, does this seem?
I feel that, you know, as long as it has any, any component of it, if it contains a commercial sign, it would not be considered a mural and would be subject to regulations. So, okay.
That makes sense. Any other questions for staff on that?
This is still open for public comment.
Okay, all right. So, with no more questions for staff right now, is there anybody from the public who would like to come forward and comment on this? If you do, just come forward and you can give your name and address. Okay, there's nobody? Oh, yes, sir. Please come forward. Give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Guy Wolf. I'm at 6001 Stirrup Road. I am very supportive of the proposals. My only concern is it seems like one of them was already in there, the 20% slope, and it's been promoted now into a more conspicuous view. So, there may be more emphasis on that. My concern is there are other aspects that are part of a PUD, such as the impact, especially the impact on neighbors. And that, I am concerned, will get short shrift. It will be by default then demoted as one of the considerations on an approval or disapproval of a putt, because it didn't make it into this new higher echelon of items to review. I know that when we've reviewed them, if, for instance, if it were not serviceable by emergency vehicles, then certainly that putt would not be approved. But the comment about adverse impact on neighbors seems to be demoted in those kinds of considerations. So, with that concern, I still am supportive of that language.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Wolf before he sits down? No? Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Who else would like to speak on these proposed text changes? Okay, nobody else is coming forward, so we'll go ahead and close that and open it up for board discussion, or if you have any other questions for Paul? Ms. McBride, would you like to go forward?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I guess I just have a comment to Mr. Wolf. I would hope that it is incumbent on all of us as commission members to look at how proposed PUD would impact the adjacent property owners and how if there is to be any negative impact, that could be mitigated. So, I appreciate your comments, and I hope that all of us on this commission take that into account whenever we look at those changes.
Uh huh, yes, I'd agree as well that the impact on the neighbors is something that's always very important to me and probably like to say the other board members as well. So, I guess I'll ask you, Paul, is there, Mr. Wolf's concerned that he believes this is now, this one criteria is taking priority over some of the other ones? I don't think that was your intention at all of bringing that forward. What was your thoughts on that?
It's not really the intent. There are 15 standards to be reviewed when evaluating a PUD, and they're not in numerical order. They're just, you know, they're references to compatibility with surrounding neighbors. There's references to compliance with the comprehensive plan. There was not the 20% slope as a general standard for a PUD before. We did reference that from our comprehensive plan. It was in the comprehensive plan, but it wasn't in the, it wasn't in, as a general standard. But I feel that, you know, all standards are held to the same level. They're not, have different weights for each of them.
Okay, that helps me a lot.
I don't think it, you know, pulls that one out above the others. I think it just helps add to the general review of the PUD.
Okay, all right, thank you. And that's very helpful to have that on the record too, as well as Mr. Wolf's comments. So, is there any other discussion? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion on this? I think staff is looking for a motion to recommend approval of these changes. And then Ms. McBride had a change as well, she suggested.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we recommend approval of the proposed text amendments as presented, revised by staff with the one additional change, that the word consecutive be added on, let's see how to define it, definition 6.1 that's proposed for short-term rental, that the word consecutive be added in the second line there before 30 nights.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. I'm sorry. When you're ready.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Okay. Right. So, let's see here, go on to the next case. This is zoning case 2020-02, 3464 Mount Carmel Road subdivision. It's a public hearing for a zone change request, case 2-2020, for a property located at 3464 Mount Carmel Road, filed by Mark Walker of Walker &amp; Associates on behalf of BEE Holdings Limited Partnership, the property owner. Paul?
Thank you.
Please proceed.
The property is currently zoned AA, single-family residence, which requires a minimum lot size of one acre. And the request is a zone change to A2, single-family residence, which is a minimum lot size of 14,000 square feet. Again, the property is located at 3464 Mount Carmel Road. The applicant is proposing to construct a 12-lot, single-family residence subdivision, with one lot being reserved for the detention basin, so a total of 11 homes proposed to be constructed. The property currently has a parsonage. At one time, there was a church on this property. The church has since been removed, demolished. So, the parking lot remains, and then the parsonage is still on the site. It's a little over five acres. It's almost six acres. Let me get to the... So, this is the aerial map. It's a little over six acres. There's approximately 408 feet of frontage on Mount Carmel Road. The property is relatively flat, although it has a slight decrease in grade towards the rear of the property. This is toward the east. The, this is the former, or parsonage, I believe it is still being used for residence. The church was formerly located in this vicinity, and this is the current parking lot. There was a baseball field back here in this corner at one point in time as well, and the backstop is still there. The current property again is AA, and all the surrounding property in the township is zoned AA. The, where the color ends, this is the county border between Hamilton and Claremont County with Union Township. And the property in Union Township is zoned R1, which is a mix between the townships AA, A, and A2 zoning district. So, there's, in R1 zoning district in Union Township, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. The future land use map of the comprehensive plan identifies the site for single-family as well as the surrounding properties. This is just the existing survey or site features of the property. And this is the proposed subdivision. So, again, Mount Carmel Road, just a small cul-de-sac. 12 lots are identified. However, Lot 7 is proposed to be detention-only and not a buildable lot. So, there's a little bit of site history for the property. The property, current owner purchased the property in September of 2018, and shortly following that, the church was removed. A pre-submital open house was held on this in July 8th of 2019. We did have a fairly decent turnout for that. The notes from that meeting are in your packet. There were concerns over the density of the property, of the development, as well as the stormwater. Again, the detention basin is in here, and it lets out and naturally flows in generally east direction. So, there was concerns of how the stormwater was being handled. Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission held a public meeting on February the 6th of 2020, and the planning commission did recommend approval of the zone change. Sorry, I did have one more color slide of the same, the same layout. We can come back to that. So, these are the site photos of the property. This is looking generally west from the parking lot back to Mount Carmel Road. There are single-family homes on the other side of Mount Carmel Road, and the proposed street would be centered in between these two homes. This is looking in the opposite direction from the parking lot and generally toward the east. This is looking to the north. This is the, this is the parsonage that would be removed. This is the adjacent neighbor to the north who has about two acres. And this is the garage that belongs to the neighbor immediately to the north. This is looking south on Mount Carmel Road. Again, the houses are single-family homes on the opposite side, on the west side of Mount Carmel Road. This is the site in question. We're standing in the driveway. However, the proposed street would be just located just to the south of the existing driveway. And this is looking north along Mount Carmel Road. This would be standing where the new street would come out. So, in looking at a zone change, we look at the township's adopted plans and review consistency with what is proposed with the township's adopted plans. This zone change was also routed to the county agencies. We received only reports back from metropolitan sewer districts that there were sewers available. Hamilton County Soil and Water submitted their standard review comments of what would need to be done if this moves forward. Anderson Township Fire and Rescue had three questions regarding adequate water source, fire hydrants, and if it was a public street, which it is a public street. So, the water source and those items would be addressed too, if the subdivision were to move forward. There were no comments from Ohio EPA or the Hillside Trust, since there was not really topography involved. So, in evaluating this request with the township's adopted plans, we first started with the comprehensive plan. We've talked about the future land use, which it is consistent with the future land use map. Staff also felt that it was consistent with just general land use guidelines in evaluating this type of requests. And how staff reviewed this was we looked at the surrounding density. While the surrounding area is zoned for one-acre lots, the majority of the lots are non-conforming and do not, they range in size from a half acre down to just over a quarter acre. So, we had some of the surrounding streets, Susan View, Apple Blossom, Vic Barb. Those streets, and then going into Claremont County to the lots that would back up to the subdivision, range in size. So, in the immediate area, the lots generally are not one acre. The lot to the immediate north is two acres. But even across the street, some of those are not quite an acre. So, at the time when it was zoned for an acre, there were no sewers available. There are sewers available now. So, the question is whether the proposed density is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And township staff felt that they were, the density was consistent and compatible. There are different other goals in the comp plan regarding housing in neighborhoods, land use in development. And again, staff felt that this was consistent. With the zoning resolution, it would be, the lots that they're showing would be compatible with the A2 zoning district. Sidewalks are proposed on both sides of the new street, as well as the Mount Carmel Road frontage. They would be required. They're not shown on the plan, but sidewalks would be required on Mount Carmel along this frontage. The township's Economic Development Committee also submitted a letter of support. So, staff recommendation is to approve the zone change. If the zoning commission does approve the zone change, there were a couple of conditions that we were recommending. Again, the plan does not show a sidewalk on Mount Carmel Road frontage, which would be required. Also, since density was a concern of the neighborhood, while there is not currently a home proposed on Lot 7 with a detention basin, that could always change in the future. Since this is not a planned district, it's just a straight zoning request. So, staff was suggesting that a deed restriction be placed on Lot 7, just to prevent a house on that lot. That would bring the average lot size around .4 acres for that subdivision. Some are slightly smaller. And it brings the density to just shy of a half-acre lot. So, do you have any questions?
Somebody have a question for staff on this one?
I'm going to put this back on the color rendering, because I think it's just easier to see.
Probably be a few questions on this, I'm guessing. Ms. McBride, would you?
Yeah, so Paul, if you take the acreage and you back out, say 15% for right-of-way, which is generous, I think, in theory, they could do 12 lots on this, right?
Yes.
I mean, there's nothing to say, and I'm not, certainly not questioning the intent of the applicant, but there is nothing to lock in 12 lots. They could do 15 or whatever it comes out to be, right?
At the A2, yes, yes.
And I guess that's my concern. I mean, I understand what you're saying about what they're proposing blends in with surrounding densities and that kind of thing, and that the existing zoning was put in place when there weren't sewers. But we don't have any guarantee that this is in fact what they're going to develop.
Since this is straight zoning, no, you don't have that guarantee. We did not encourage them to go a PUD route, because we didn't feel that there were really any features on this property that would qualify for a PUD. So, you are correct. With the straight zoning, you couldn't, you could condition, we were suggesting the condition of Lot 7, but...
Can, I don't know if we could condition that.
On Lot 7?
I mean, I don't think you can. I don't, I don't think we...
Unless the applicant agrees to it, right.
But, you know, and I guess the thing that I would look to toward the PUD is, I mean, this is clearly the case of spot zoning. I mean, I understand why we should be considering it, but it is, it would be a spot of A2 surrounded totally by AA. So, I don't know. I just have some concerns about it, because again, it just, you know, if something were to happen with this applicant, and they weren't able to follow through with the project, and now all of a sudden it's zoned, and it could be developed for, and those are just my rough calculations. 15, 16 lots, that's a lot different deal than what, you know, we're representing to the surrounding property owners. So, those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dungus, did you have a comment?
I had a similar comment, actually. I think my calculations came up even a little bit more. A2 allows for 3.1 homes per acre. You could go up to 18. I don't think you can rework the puzzle with the setbacks to do that many, but, so I had a similar question. And my second one was, the staff report says that the Regional Planning Commission agreed with it, but what I read on the staff report for the Regional Planning Commission, they suggested a modification to A, not A2.
So, that's correct. The staff, in their staff report and their analysis, recommended rezoning to A. Regional planning, the commission ended up approving the A2 request. That's the two differences there. So, you have the staff report from Regional Planning Staff, and then we did supply the minutes from the zoning, or the planning commission, and they ultimately approved.
Mr. Henson, did you have a question? Any questions?
I had a few, and I think we asked them.
And got them for you? Okay. Good job. I have a couple of questions. What's going on there now? When I went over to look at it, there were like a ton of cars and stuff parked... When I went over to look at it, there were like a ton of cars and stuff parked on the parking lot. And are people living in that house or what's going on?
I believe the house is occupied, but that would be a question for the applicant.
Ask the applicant that, okay. And the property owner, BEE Holdings, which rang a bell with me. Have we had BEE Holdings in here for other stuff before and what is that?
The, it's affiliated with Evans.
It's affiliated with Evans Landscaping, okay.
Again, I think that's a good question for the applicant.
We'll ask Mr. Walker about that in a minute. Let's see here. This is a, I'll ask you a little bit about this question, then maybe Mr. Walker will have some thoughts on it. You can, in the A2, which is what they're asking for, you can have a, an eighty-foot wide lot, right?
So, yes, in the A2 zoning district, eighty-foot minimum lot size. Minimum square footage of fourteen thousand square feet.
Fourteen thousand and a minimum of eighty.
Lot width.
And they're showing ninety, right?
Correct.
And then if you did what the county staff wanted, they said it should be A, but that's a hundred-foot wide lots, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so the question I'll have for Mr. Walker is, the, the county staff raised concern about if it got this zoning that it could then be reworked. But I'm wondering if he actually, since you only get ten more feet, how many lots he could really redesign in that?
And then the R1 in Union Township, the minimum lot width is, is a hundred, but the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet.
And then I saw they, they're mentioning Brookstone as their building partner on this.
Yes.
Was, was Brookstone the home builder that was doing that one? Didn't, when we approved that subdivision over by the highway by Brittany Acres, was that Brookstone that came in initially on that and said they were going to build it out? And now, and now I think they're just building a couple houses in there? Do you remember?
Brookstone was the original builder, but yes, now there are three builders.
Okay, okay, so. Yes, they did. Let's see here. And this, actually this color graphic we have up there, it shows, you know, mounding and landscaping buffering that northern, actually all around it. But that's just an illustration, right?
Correct. So, it's a straight zoning, we couldn't require buffering and generally we don't require buffering from single-family to single-family anyway?
Yeah. Okay.
Since they're compatible land uses.
Right. That's all the questions I had. Okay, I think we're done asking questions of you, thank you. And so, I'd like to invite the applicant up to present, I think, see, Mr. Walker's here and.
Good evening, my name is actually Mr. Peterson, this is Mr. Walker here.
I know Mr. Walker, but I don't know you, yes.
Yes, my name is Zach Peterson, I work for the applicant.
Okay, right, you're the attorney for the applicant, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you like to go ahead, please?
Yeah, thank you. My, please commission, my name is Zach Peterson, I do represent the property owner and applicant in this case. I'm not gonna rehash everything that, that Mr. Drury said, and you guys asked some good questions, I'm sure you wanna get to those. But we started this process about a year ago. We met with the homeowners up here in the, in the next room. And there were some concerns about the proposed development we had at the time. When we initially proposed it, we proposed twelve buildable lots. And there was some concern about density, there was some concern about screening, and there was some concern about detention. And so, we went back to the drawing board with Mr. Walker. And we think that we identified solutions to all that. So, to address the, the screening, we do have the mounds, the mounds will be built. Part of the frustration or difficulty, not frustration, not the word is, I know you guys have to like take our word on it. I can make some representations about what we're going to do, we're on camera, someone could play it later or something. But we are gonna have the mounds on all sides, we are gonna have the screening to help protect the neighbors. We also added Lot Seven is no longer a buildable lot, it's a detention. We'd be happy with staff's recommendation to put some sort of restrictive, restricted deed covenant on that. Or again, I'm making a representation on behalf of the applicant now that's being recorded, that we are not going to build on that lot. There will only be eleven buildable lots. Seven is going to be retention. One of the issues that the property currently faces is that when the rain falls, it just flows as it falls. And the detention on Lot Seven will help solve a lot of that problem. We will detain the water and then let it out into a released flow. So, the people in Union Township in Claremont County should actually get some relief from that. I was also at the Hamilton County Plan Commission, I know there's some questions about that. The history of the property is, is pretty relevant. So, when the property was zoned one acre lots, it's because it was for health reasons. There were not sewer on Roundabout or on Mount Carmel Road. And so, you needed the one acre lot to deal with the sewage. That problem has been since corrected, there is now sewer on Mount Carmel Road. So, the rationale for the initial zoning of the lots is really no longer applicable. And, and so that and just some other, as a developer, you always have to be sort of in tune with what the market wants. And the market in Anderson Township, people don't want acre lots really anymore. It's a lot of maintenance, it's a lot of upkeep, you're not selling those lots as much. And so, when you have fewer lots, the other problem that goes up, and this speaks to the economic development portion of it. When you have fewer lots, that just means one thing, they're gonna be more expensive and you have to put a more expensive house on it. And the Economic Development Committee, I, they meet and they review these things as well. And one of the big needs that this township has, and I'm a prime example of it, is when you grow up in the township, Anderson Township's a very nice place to live. And a lot of people who are coming out of school can't afford to live in Anderson Township. So, then we end up losing all these great people that don't make it their way, their way back to the community. So, I was one of those people, I went to Turpin High School in Sherwood Forest, and so did my parents. And when I graduated, I couldn't afford to live in Anderson. So, I lived in Oakley for thirteen years before I was able to move back into the township. And so, what we're trying to do here is to build a development that meets the township's needs. And the township needs lots that are a little less expensive than if we had one acre lots. People aren't gonna be able to afford those, the type of products really is not going to fit that area and it's gonna be expensive. So, that helps to explain some of the rationale as well. Those are all the really, I don't wanna redo everything that, that Mr. Drury said, and I know you guys have some questions. So, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
So, you used the term both retention and detention, is that gonna be water dry at that basin?
Dry.
Dry, okay, so it's gonna be detention.
Yeah, there was some concern, one of the homeowners, I think in Union Township, had mentioned something about, hey, is it basically a swimming pool our kid's gonna get? And there's, it's gonna be a dry.
Yeah, you used the term retention.
I'm sorry.
And then, did you all give any thought to, to going for an A district if, if this truly is your intent? And then ultimately maybe you had to go to the board or some EPLs to get relief on the, on the lot width of doing it as a PUD. And you can understand our dilemma here, as an attorney, you know we cannot condition any of this. Not the mounding, not the buffering, not the, you know, use of Lot Seven.
I understand that.
Not the number of lots, so.
And we, we feel the burn on that too, because we know what we wanna do and we wanna live up to what we're telling people that we're going to do. And I, I honestly don't know how, I mean, I can make a representation, but I guess if I get hit by a bus or whatever else. But we're, we're not gonna build more than eleven lots. We don't want to do that. We want it to be a neighborhood that's not built right on top of each other. And really from a marketability standpoint, I guess, maybe there's some comfort there. We don't wanna build houses on top of each other. We don't think that we can sell those houses for as much as we can if you give them a little space like this. And other than that, yeah, I'm saying that we're gonna have eleven lots, seven's gonna be detention, and we're gonna do the screening. The whole reason why we asked the public before we submitted any of this is because we genuinely care about what our neighbors think and what their concerns are. We wanted to elicit those out so that we could help solve those problems.
And the township requires the meeting as well, aside from.
I think it's actually, it's not required, I think it's an, it's an optional meeting. And we worked with township staff too, before we put this together, to get their feedback as well.
In the letter from the Economic Development Team, they mentioned that the final home prices are gonna be in the three hundred to four hundred range. But in other parts of documentation that I have, I saw that the starting price is gonna be averaged at four fifteen. Can you just provide some clarity on which.
I saw the starting, I saw that notion, I can't remember where, maybe you can tell me where, where the four fifteen is, and that, that's inaccurate.
I think I saw it in two places. But I did see a range of three to four hundred, and then I saw an average starting of four fifteen, so I'm just trying to.
The range is gonna be from three hundred to four hundred. What we're trying to do, if anyone's familiar with the, I guess it's not new, the development over on Church Street, right across from St. John Fisher, it's that type of product. Now, that's a totally different zoning, those houses are pretty close to each other. But it's that type of product, those houses, we're selling anywhere from three fifty to four fifty. Thank you.
So, we've established it's not a PUD, and so this stuff is some goals that you're representing. The, there were some decent-looking elevation drawings included in our package that come from, where do those come from? Brookstone?
Of the houses?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe those came from Brookstone.
Okay. Are you representing that those finishes and that kind of detail is going to be shown on the houses?
Not to that level of detail, no. I mean, Brookstone's gonna build a home and they're custom homes, so, you know, what the custom, what the homeowner wants, yeah.
Right.
We're not gonna dictate that level, I don't even think we can.
I don't think so. But I was just wondering, cause they were included in the packet, and so.
Just to give people an idea of what the product's gonna look like overall.
Yes.
Not down to the size, type of material inside, you know, that kind of stuff.
Okay. And I don't have any other questions for you, thank you very, any other questions for Mr.? Okay.
To your point, real quick, Mr. Walker can confirm, even with, with the setback limitation you were talking about, there's been talk, we put seventeen or eighteen, the number's only thirteen because of those setback requirements that you were talking about. But again, we're, it's eleven buildable lots, that's all.
Eleven buildable. I did have some questions for Mr. Walker.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all.
But, but you may have had something you wanted to say as well, so please go ahead first.
My name's Mark Walker, I'm gonna represent the applicant. And I didn't really have anything to say unless somebody had some questions.
I have some, so I'll jump in, then maybe you guys will have some as well. So, there's a question on this, if you get the zoning you're asking for, which is A2, which allows an eighty-foot lot. But on your layout, you laid out ninety-foot lots. If you, can that be reconfigured actually to get more lots in there? Because you can only change your lot width by ten feet.
Correct, so we would only be able to pick up one lot.
One lot.
And if we, if we gave an extra ten feet, or if we subtracted ten feet from each lot, we'd only pick up a hundred and twenty feet. And that's not enough or two.
Okay. There's some contours and stuff shown on this drawing up on the wall and stuff. Have you actually looked at the engineering that you can put those contours or that, that mounding in and, and your drainage and stuff will still work with those?
Yes, that's correct, we've, we've taken it pretty far.
Okay.
That's all based on real field data.
The runoff, so right now there's, there was a okay-sized building and a lot of blacktop on there with no detention. I don't believe any detention on there. So, there's a lot of water running off that that is not reflecting of like natural conditions and stuff. So, when you sized your detention pond, are you sizing it so it runs off the same after your development as it is today with all the blacktop? Or did you upsize that to help reduce the, the runoff?
Well, it's gonna reduce the runoff, so we, we would have used the actual blacktop for the initial two-year calculation. But, but every storm year higher than the two-year would still be required to be limited to the two-year outflow. So, so I don't know if you can zoom in on that. There's a chart up there that I have on that sheet. Okay, okay. But, but so, every, every, so there's a two-year, five-year, ten-year, twenty-five-year, fifty-year, hundred-year. Each storm gets more intense as the number gets higher. And before the site was developed, there's a two-year storm, which is a very low-level storm, that produces a certain amount of outflow based upon existing conditions. Under the proposed design, every year storm, all the way up to the one hundred year, has to be limited to that two-year value. So, we're, we're really reducing the amount of volume coming off the, the site by a great deal. Because every post-development storm is reduced to the pre-development two-year storm.
So, you, so, so what you're saying is your, your runoff's gonna be the two-year value, but with all the blacktop and stuff.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Whatever's out there now, the two-year value of what else is out there now.
I understand, okay. The maintenance on the stormwater set is HOA. Can you do like, or have you pursued like a ditch position or something like that? So that it's, we don't have to rely on a HOA, which is, may or may not be there after so many years.
They typically don't do that, although I will say, I don't think anybody has an issue with it. It's just always been, it, it's never been something that everybody wanted, everybody was okay with the HOA. But I think, you know, if there's, I know in Claremont County, they, they have a county program, and well, they'll take care of it. I don't know if Hamilton has the same thing, but if they do, they would be happy to do that.
I'm guessing they don't have that, or. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Was there any other questions for, for Mr. Walker?
So, would it, you're the designer, not me, but wouldn't it be possible to take Lots One and Twelve and use the lot frontage on Mount Carmel Road? Have the driveways enter off of the private street and pick up a bunch of frontage there? In addition to shrinking those from ninety fifty to eighty, so you could pick up more lots?
So, you're, you're thinking, okay, so create frontage lots where One and Twelve are?
Yeah, so One and Twelve, and they would use their frontage, their lot frontage on Mount Carmel to make the eighty feet, right?
I don't, how deep is our lot? I don't have that number in my head.
I mean, I'm not asking you to redesign it here tonight.
Well, I'm just getting, I'm thinking if our lot is, if Lot One is only a hundred and thirty feet deep, there, you'd only get one lot fronting, fronting Mount Carmel Road, because the width would have to be ninety feet wide.
Yeah, and maybe I'm not making this up, but I, I, I just think that, I'm just saying that you would pick up one additional lot maybe. I think there are other ways to slice this to, to pick up one additional lot. That's just my opinion.
It's, I mean, it's, it's possible, I just, as a cursory look, I see us picking up one lot if it was, if we, if, if another person got ahold of it, I see, you know, based upon the street layout, I see one additional lot.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody, anybody else for the applicant? I don't, I don't think so. Okay, shall we open it up for, all right. So, now is the opportunity for members of the public to provide comment. Or you can also pose questions to the board. And if we want to accept those questions, we can recite them back to the applicant when we're done. Okay, if there's anybody that is, would like to speak that, so what we'll do is we'll ask for those who are in favor, those who are opposed. And then sometimes people don't feel like they're really opposed or in favor, but they just wanna provide information or ask questions, so that'll be number three. So, I'll invite, one at a time, anybody who is in favor of this project to come forward. Okay. Oh, yes, sir, we have one coming forward. Please give us your name and address.
My name's Steve Phelps, I live at thirty-three twenty Mount Carmel Road. I'm in favor of it, it's just a few things that I, I hope don't get overlooked. I noticed some of the agencies that you, you, that they looked into as far. I noticed, uh, some of the agencies that you, you, that they looked into as far as county engineer, Hamilton County, this, that. I just wanna make sure that you understand that the water is not under fire hydrant and water supply is not Hamilton County. That's Claremont County water. Also, it's Claremont County sewer. Hamilton County put the trunk line in a couple of years ago, but they ti- they tied it into Claremont County. So they, they should be, you know, those agencies should be checked into before you just write it off, because they might say, hey, we can't treat any more waste, or the water pressure's too low, whatever. Okay, so, Hamilton County really shouldn't have anything to do with any of that part of it. And the only other thing I have to say is, would be, under safety, here I go again. Currently, there's anywhere between ten, fifteen semis that use that five-ton road. Okay, I just wanna let Evans know, it's gonna be, there's, it's a five-ton limit, and they honor that. I have to say, Doug has been very good at his drivers. But, they're gonna have to deal with full loads of, of dirt. And are they gonna go north, or are they gonna go south? They go north, they're gonna go down over that zigzag hill and deal with the tractor trailers that are coming up and down, and school buses. So it's just a safety issue, and I don't, I'm not against truck drivers or anything like that, but, but I am worried about the kids going in that, in those school buses.
Are you referring to hauling of dirt when they do this project?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I understand.
I just want, have them to be aware that, be careful, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, did anybody have a question for Mr. Phelps? Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward and speak in favor of it, who's of the public? All right, is there anybody who is opposed that would like to come forward and speak, opposed against the project? Okay, is there anybody who is, maybe has some questions, or is, um, just wants to say something about it? Either pro or con? Okay, why don't you come up, uh, second row, and we have a s- a few folks raise their hand for that.
Hi, I'm Todd Grassman, I live at thirty-four seventy-nine Mount Carmel Road. And I don't know how the retention pond, how you get the size of it. There's a neighbor that lives on, uh, Apple Blossom, and she is in the far top corner. And that retention pond's gonna drain on her, her property.
Hey, hey Paul, do we have like a, like a wider view of this or something, we can see what he's talking about?
Top right-hand corner.
Top right, got you.
But, uh, there is a drain off that, I've been, I've walked her property, and, um, she's not here tonight. I, I, I would assume that she's in the military, and she had some real concerns about, uh, that drain off on her property. It's generally a dry area back there. I mean, the natural flow of the water does go that way, but it's generally dry. And that retention pond, because that area, there's a lot of clay in the soil. Once that, um, fills up with water, and, you know, you get several days full of rain, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna put a lot of water on her, uh, property back there. And, uh, I would assume, and I, she works at the VA, and she does stuff through the military and stuff, but if it weren't for that, I think she'd probably be here. But, um, you have eleven houses there, and I would assume that they're all gonna have basements, sump pumps. Each sump pump puts, uh, a ni, uh, most sump pumps put off thirty-two gallons a minute. And over an hour, that's over a thousand gallons an hour. And I was calculating it when I was sitting back there, and over a day, that is a lot of water. And most of those sump pumps are probably gonna pump out. I know when mine kicks on, it kicks on during a heavy rain, it could be, you know, ten times an hour. And I guess I'm just kinda concerned about what's gonna happen to that property back there. I'm not really opposed to it, I'm not in favor for it, I'm not opposed, but I, I don't wanna just think about myself. There's, you know, you know, I think she needs, I, her, her, you know, she needs to be thought of in this process. And I know, uh, she'd probably be here if she could, um, I guess I'm gonna urge her to maybe call you or something. But that's all I had to say.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Grassman? No? All right, and so we are still on people who are not opposed and not in favor, but they have, uh, comment or questions, like he just had, that was a good one, I thought. And, um, yes, sir, please come up, go ahead and give us your name again, we know you, but please give us your name and address.
Hello, again, uh, this is Guy Wolf at six thousand one Stirrup. And, um, my comment is around, uh, this is actually creating a much denser, um, location within a, an, a sea of double A. We'll have an island of, of A two, and it's more of a question is, why don't we use a P U D? I don't doubt the integrity and intent of the applicant in, in coming forward with this plan. But as we've discussed, the applicant can change, future owners can change. And it, it would be, I think, in the township's interest if we're gonna grant such a variance to our zoning, uh, profile, that we have some, uh, ability to demand or, or control, uh, the, the level of development.
Thank you. Any questions on that point? Okay, thanks a lot. Who else would like to come forward and provide a comment? Yes, sir, in the back, please come up. Please give us your name and address.
Hi, my name's Jesse Smart, I live at three, four, eight, six, Mount Carmel Road, I'm one house to the north of this. You know, we, before I moved into Anderson, I was living in the city, we're in a real tight neighborhood, itty-bitty lots, houses right on top of each other. And when we moved to Anderson, we found this little corner, and what drew us to it was, you know, it's big, wide, big lots, a lot of space around us. And, you know, that's what we've come to love out there, and why we're, why we're making our life out there. Mike, I'm not opposed to development necessarily, but we're concerned about the density that's proposed in here. I, I was trying to look at the, the lot sizes on the map, it seems like their biggest lot in here is maybe smaller than every lot around, except for one, at least the ones that are immediately close. I know not everyone has a one-acre lot, but, you know, a lot of the places around there have over an acre. So it's, it's pretty spread out. And I, I feel like the zoning designation A is, is, that's for a half-acre lot approximately. Seems like it'd be a lot more in the feel of what's already out there. And, and it's, my concern is also that if we allow this to go in at A two, they, they build whatever they say they're gonna build. Does this set a precedent for other properties around us being then zoned A two in the future? 'Cause I know sewers are coming in on thirty-two, and that more infrastructure's coming along, and that might turn loose all the hillsides over there. And then will future developments be, have a kind of an in-road to packing them in as tight as they can as well? And that kinda goes back to the, the safety that, um, he had mentioned about the traffic on Mount Carmel Road. Uh, right now, you know, it's, it's a real nice drive, and people like tearing through it. And I'm worried if, in the future, if uncontrolled development happens over there, real high-density development happens over there, that Mount Carmel Road become a thoroughfare, and, you know, end up being like Wolfangle or something like that. And then, the other thing was, to the end of the sewers, you know, we all, as a community, had to vote and pay to upgrade the sewers. And when that went through, I, I thought we were all told that it was kinda at the limit of the design. And we, we'd mentioned that to you guys when, when we had the initial meeting. And the only answer I've ever heard about putting these extra houses on here, I, I think there's, there's four, four sewer taps there now. And the only answer we've heard about putting the more than four sewer taps in is that there are sewers present. Not necessarily that the sewers are present, can handle the extra capacity. So, um, you know, I, change is gonna happen, it, it's inevitable, but I, I'd ask you to use your powers to steer this change to better protect, you know, the, the feel of the community that's already there than this A two designation would, uh, present. So, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Who else would like to get up and give a comment on this? Oh, one more, okay, yeah.
My neighbor, the guy that lives in between me and the development, he wanted to come and, and speak to pretty much the same effect about the density concerns, but he's laid up with the flu today, so.
Okay.
But he'll have, three of these houses will be in his essential backyard, or side yard even.
Yeah.
So, he was, you know, he wasn't real excited about the density of it all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else, last chance? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and, um, close the public portion. Uh, thank you for all those comments, they're really helpful. And, um, I will, uh, go ahead and, uh, entertain some discussion by the zoning commission. Some of the comments spurred a, a question or two I would have back for Paul. So, I would say maybe if we have any additional questions for Paul, maybe we could ask those first, and then, um, we could have our discussion. Does anybody have a que, yeah? Okay, go ahead, Dan.
So, Paul, um, one of the gentlemen made the comment that both water and sewer are coming from Claremont County?
Yes, they, they are, we routed, and we did receive a letter, a security availability letter.
And it was conditional?
Yes.
And it was conditioned on?
The proposed, I mean, when you say conditional, it was, the, the development was approved, yes, yes.
As proposed, right. And then what about water?
We did not get a response for water.
And do we, do they?
But, and I don't know that it was routed to the right agency, is, is, could be very right. We didn't get a response from Cincinnati Water Works, so we probably should've run into the, which we knew that, and I should've.
Do we require flow tests for, for a development like this?
The fire department would require one, and, um, that was one of their comments under their, uh, review.
Okay, yes, I'll just see. And then, um, if there's a, if the commission, and I don't know how the other commission members feel, and I don't even know at this moment, know how I feel, but if there was a, um, if we wanted to make a, um, recommendation to the trustees of either approval or denial of what was requested, is that an option that this commission has?
I'm gonna recommend, sorry.
If, if the, uh, commission wanted to make, and, and again, I, I, just asking this question. If they wanted, if we wanted to make a recommendation to the trustees of, of something other than, um, approval or denial of the A two, say A, um.
So this was discussed downtown as well, at the Regional Planning Commission. So I, I think one question for the applicant is if they're willing to reconsider, and, and maybe tabling it to see if, if that would be the case. But have them present a plan, you know, showing A versus A two. But then, I would, I would suggest either a recommendation of approval or denial based on this, not a recommendation of, of something else.
I mean, the plan is great, but the plan doesn't mean anything. I mean, I, again, I appreciate that that is your intent, so I don't, don't question that, but
But you're right.
We have no way to tie you to that.
Since it's not a planned district?
Yeah, so, it's nice, but I, you know.
Right.
That was all the questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions for Paul?
Um, we talked a little bit about the HOA, so, in theory, if an HOA was not set up, would the maintenance of that lot just fall on whoever the, the owner is?
Correct, that is correct. And generally, what we're finding out with detention basins is once the HOA is dissolved after twenty-five, thirty years, the responsibility does fall to the owner of that lot. The water and sewer, if that comes from Claremont County, we should, and I, that's really interesting news. We should probably have something from their Water Resources Department saying there's adequate water and sewer capacity.
Okay.
I, I would think that would be, uh, important. So, I guess that's the only question I had for you, Paul, on that. Go ahead.
Go ahead and say.
Okay, well, if there's no more, oh, yes, uh, Mr. Hinson, do you have a? I, if, if, I would be okay hearing it. Would that be okay? We'll, we'll go ahead and just allow Mr. Walker a comment on that, 'cause that's his, I think, or your question.
Sorry, I did speak with Lyle Bloom, uh, it's my understanding that this sewer was constructed by MSD right in that area, and it drains into Claremont County system, and then the water is completely Claremont County. So I verified with him that capacity was available for both water and sewer, but it's, uh, but the water will be reviewed by them. But since MSD owns the sewer, then MSD controls all of the design of our subdivision sewer. So, it has been checked, and as, as I've been told, every, all the capacity's there.
Okay, thank you. Paul, do, do you agree that we have adequate verification of the? We do have an MSD, uh, we have a letter stating sewer capacity, we did not receive anything for water. Okay. Believe you, but, just didn't get the letter. Discussion among the board? You'd like to start? Mr. Hinson, thank you.
I think my initial comments are kind of in the line that, you know, I kind of sympathize the situation that you're in with wanting to wo- work the process and work with the neighbors, and be diligent, and present something that makes sense, um, within that process. But, on the other side of it, you're asking for an A two zoning designation, which allows for other things, additional things to happen. Worst cases do play out from time to time. So we're kind of in a situation with few assurances, and I think, maybe I would've preferred to have seen, you know, res- acqu- request for A with some variances added to it, so maybe we're, we're approaching this from the other end, to maybe make some of the assurances that we're looking for with an A two doable. Whereas this leaves me feeling open-ended, and I'm a little less sure of, of the process from that standpoint. That's really where my thoughts are.
Okay, thank you. Mr., Mr. Dundas, did you have a thought on this?
Yeah, I think A does seem a little bit more appropriate as well. I think the, the one homeowner's comment about, does it then lower the, or change the concentration of all the average homes in the area? And so the next one can go even tighter and tighter and tighter, and where does it end? But I think the, the bigger thing that needs to be addressed before a decision would be made is just clarification on the water availability. That's all.
Ms. McBride, did you have any additional thoughts?
Yeah, I think I've kind of expressed my concern, I agree with my fellow commission members.
Okay, all right, um, I guess my thought on it was, when I went out and looked at it, um, I had mixed emotions on it. I didn't think it was that out of place relative to what I viewed of the surrounding lots. And I, I did like the dimensions okay, uh, that were proposed, but granted, there are, are a good amount of uncertainties with this. You know, we've experienced in, uh, some of these other P U Ds, things are represented, and then they don't happen, not in. Not in the PUDs, but in some of the other developments and and it's possible that, you know, I, I hear what Paul's saying, but not a bunch of extra red tape with a PUD. But a PUD would give us some greater assurances to that. But generally speaking, I, I liked the subdivision. I thought the lot widths were reasonable. I didn't feel it was out of place. There would be a lot of faith on some of these things happening that are shown that, again, we can't compel. Like the, the mounding and that sort of thing. So it's a little bit of a difficult one for me. Any other comments? Somebody like to make?
Would we like to give the applicant the opportunity to, to table this maybe for a month versus us voting on it this evening?
We could, I think, I, I like to, if we table something like that, that we give an expectation back of, of what it is we want. Because I, I, I feel like if we give an expectation and they go meet that and then we turn it down, even though they met that, then we're just wasting everybody's time. So, you know, if somebody has some thoughts that are like, I'm kind of in the middle and I, I don't think I would approve this, but if they did this, like if it was a PUD or if it was something else.
Yeah, I think it's what everybody's said is that, you know, as it's proposed, but we don't have any guarantee that that's what's going to happen. And so if they would like to come back with some thing that would provide us with that assurance, whether it's modifying the request to A, which would, you know, assure that, and then they would have to obviously probably go and get some variances on lot widths, or coming back with a PUD to assure that, you know, that that's, we're going to, what we get is what we're, what we see is what we're going to get.
I, I think, you know, we've discouraged requesting variances in the past, you know. So I, I think if you are steering them in that direction, I would encourage a PUD so that the variances could be addressed at the time as a complete development and not have a, a zoning and then come back for variances.
Right, because the BZA, we don't control what they think anyway. They might just say, well, no, we don't want that. That's right. I, I guess from my perspective, without overkilling it, if the PUD came back and basically showed some of these things that's on this plan today, like the mounding and the trees, the lot widths, the reserved lot for detention, I think I would be comfortable saying that I felt it's within that character out there. That's my opinion. So coming back with a PUD would give me adequate assurances. I can't speak for you guys, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think again, my, my biggest concern is we just, we have no way to make sure that, that this is what's going to happen.
Okay, so we could have a motion to act on it or a motion to table. Granted, if it, if it's a PUD, that's not something we can command. That's something that the applicant has to want. So we do need to take some sort of action on it. So I guess I'd entertain a motion either to approve or deny or secondly, a motion to table. Two of us have expressed that a PUD would be of some interest to us. If somebody would like to try and make a motion.
Well, I would put a motion, at least we'll take a discussion, that on case two dash twenty twenty Anderson for the ZonMap amendment being considered at thirty-four sixty-four Mount Carmel Road, the request being from double A to A2, that we table that request till our next meeting in March for the purposes of allowing the applicant to consider some of the discussion and concerns that he's heard this evening.
So a second?
I guess, can we add to that, that have the assurance that the water is available?
Sure.
I accept the amendment.
Yeah, that's a good amendment.
Okay, then I second that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to table it. And there's been some concerns expressed of some additional information would be helpful to the board. Roll call?
Mr. Dundas? Mr. Henson? Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes. Okay, so the applicant could circle back with Paul and look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you. And we're going to take a short break while we change the video. Just moments.